Call meeting order, any additions or deletions to the agenda? Here, Doug, we have a motion to adjourn. Oh, yeah, there is one, that letter there for. Affordable Housing.
Yes.
Under correspondence. Anything else? None, can we have a motion to approve?
Some.
Thanks.
Okay. Well, Mike. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Minutes of the previous meeting. Something across the top here. Any errors or omissions noted? If none, can we have a motion to approve the minutes of the twentieth of December?
Second.
Sounds, seem like a long time, we already have it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This is arising from the minutes, you saw there, there was a... The letter went to the fire department, they request a meeting to talk about the...
We had a meeting, they discussed it, and Chief and Deputy Chief, I think, are going to be the reps.
Okay. They're going to respond to us, or is that the response?
Probably Ralph is... We haven't had practice or anything, so.
That's it.
Just had a quick executive meeting, so.
Okay, and because they're coming, who from here wants to sit on that committee? I would, but I, you know, thirty year man, you're a thirty year man, you're a member, so our choices are somewhat limited, yeah.
I was actually going to suggest, because the two of us have an affiliation.
Yeah, fine, yes.
It's a little easier.
Yeah, oh, it's a lot easier.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll wait till we hear from them, so. No, we won't let it go too long, Tom, I guess.
So, I did draft a term of reference, because basically I wanted counsel's input on my thoughts of making it more than this fire hall thing, but expand it so that he does... He has had the greatest communication, and this would help with the budgets and everything else. Right. Budget time, he can bring the things and sit with the committee and, you know, go over all the things, at least it's a sense of communication. So, if people agree with having that committee set up that way.
Yeah. There's something to work from, some document to work from, so.
Because if you don't, then you get, you know...
You need for the second meeting.
Yeah, you just meet, or you're... Your meet, when you meet, you may be off on a subject that you really got no feeling to be on, but you just make your way back.
Yeah. So, I guess we need to...
We can make that a motion under due business, or approve what you want to approve now.
I would make that a motion, yeah.
You got to... Radio the council, I don't know.
Yeah.
Record the council.
Get term of reference.
Yep.
Second to that?
Therefore.
Right? Any discussion on them? None, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Reports. CA reports.
So, in the planning department, or whatever, you know, development permit zoning combination letters for subdivision approved in December. Building Department, one bill permit, generate thirty-seven dollars in permanent fees, and that was the renovations of my commercial office at twenty-one Warwick Street. Fire Department, there were twelve calls in the month of December, six to town, six municipality, and two of those were for alarm sounding. So, I have done, I have figured, reviewed the emails that I get from dispatch, and I can from that determine, and I did start doing a spreadsheet after keep track of alarm sounding, or false alarm.
False alarm.
And, so, we're starting to keep track.
Keep track of them, yeah.
Yeah.
Bill, was it seventy bucks after the third one or something?
Yeah.
Because we seem to get a lot of them.
Well, the ones, it seems to me, the least is the repeats, right? The first one is usually, you just sit and say, you know, you're supposed to be registered number one with us, and you're not, and you need a warning that on your second one or your third one, you could get, and then every turn one gets up. Then it goes up one hundred and fifty bucks after the third or fourth one. But, most of them are government agencies, like the hospital, and those others that can be the alarm truck. Senior management team, we reviewed three HR policies, the employee conduct, competitive discipline policy, employee leave policy, alcohol break use policy is part of our review. Policies require no substantial change, there don't need administrative amendments to update gender language, and adding that policy shall be reviewed every five years. This also includes a review of the HR policy manual, we will start reviewing the administrative policy manual in February. I reviewed the amendments to the danger lines, or unsafe policy with management team, amendments are unnecessary, you align the policy with council's correction on dangerous or unsafe orders. Draft amendment policy is WTA paper. Okay. Racket Road flood mitigation project, construction on the road is completed, options for beach access can be explored and presented to council for consideration at a later date. This letter clears up a little bit, you can actually see what's on the ground in there, because it's not as high as we thought, so we may be able to ramp it as opposed to the beach, as opposed to putting steps. And if we can ramp it, then that'll check it off in excess of, it'll get this box too, so.
Box.
Huh?
A box.
A boat box. I want a box.
You get about a twenty minute window if I were to...
You know the minutes that that was, deputy mayor or something?
Yeah. So, dig ground of land, so I met with Matthew Lamont from Moore survey, and so, the plan is, is to, for him to get a sketch done, so hopefully the time table, I give him a longer for review. So, we have the presentation council for review before we go in the private room. So, basically, it's what, show what ones we want to regain, what's going to be left for him, consolidation, a lot. Next, I've done community grant applications, so basically, under our policy, you notice, been out in Facebook and on our website, and applications will be received by until January three first. Public Works staffing, public works director has pressing concerns on public works staffing issues. The Works Department now has one vacancy, and over the holidays, the public works director spent a lot of time hoping to see if there was any experienced operator that may be interested in joining the team. Those that were interested lost interest when the town's current salary scales were discussed. The public works director has done some research on wages paid to local companies that do road construction and infrastructure upgrades.
So, just a question here with wages and stuff. I know, like, we're all getting into wages, because obviously there's another forty cent raise in April, another one in October. Are we, do we need to adjust some of our salaries for public works, because, I mean, you know, some people have been there sixteen, twenty years, and how are we gonna, you know, compete with?
We just done the survey. We did done the survey, you know.
So, do we have the data available for what the comparables look like, or?
Record has got some things I didn't put in the report, because it's really not public information.
Okay.
There's a couple of questions that, or a couple of things that I'm from council, before we start looking at things, and...
I just knew we had salary scales, so I just wanted, they need to review that stuff.
Yeah, we did review salary scales, and as far as... When we look at, when we look at salary scales, we compare, when we done public works, we compare with other public works departments in towns of our size, comparable to us, and we are definitely in the ballpark, right? However, the thing is, is that our public works department is not just an R and M public work department, or that's what we're, where we're heading. We're heading to do a lot of in-house infrastructure work, as much as we can do in-house. We've done that for the last two or three years at least, and it's been, basically, it has been, proved to be cost savings when we compared to trying to contract it out, because contractors, you can see, when we contracted the racket road contract, how much that it came in, over what we thought it would come in, right? So, I'd be interested, besides the public, the scale, salary scales, is some idea of the work that we've done outside our normal scope, and some idea of what that may have cost us if we had gone into the market instead of doing it ourselves, too. It might be hard to do that, but...
Yes and no. Should be able to talk with Eric to give me rough ideas on, you know, how much meter they were charged to do, install culverts, silver lines, stuff like that, so we'd be able to do it, so. I know the cost estimate that he gave us in the South End, we were well under what his cost estimate was on those two projects, so.
And considering they tend to go over on their estimates, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, frequently, but it would give us, we start paying a little bit more money for, like you suggested, an experienced person, but it might be cheaper if we do with sources, but it hasn't in the past, it's proven that. We've saved money, and I mean, but I need, I would like to see more data, just a little bit more data. Well, that's why I asked, yeah, you asked some of our questions, you know, is council satisfied with the public works performance, completing infrastructure projects that they are taking? If yes, does council want infrastructure projects that are within the capacity of the public work department, because that's key, it's got to be within our capacity, because if it isn't, then we make a contract anyway, right? Because it's got to be within the capacity that we have, otherwise it won't save us money, right? And, so, do you want that to continue? If no, does council want public works just to return to an R and M issues, they think, oh, so, fix a watering grate and that stuff, that's it? Any other thing, put storms over it, anything new put in, you just contract it out?
I don't think, I don't, I don't think we should, I mean, I look at the sidewalks that have been completed, Ford Street, Victoria Street, we've got, we've got some more to do, and if any good workmanship, it lasted, so.
And the Victoria Street sidewalk is, they basically, if you remember, it was here, I don't think, two new counts.
Three.
Huh?
The three.
The three, three were here, but, so, we did contract that, from the tender, and the tender came back, we sold way above budget, even worse, well worse than the racket road.
I think four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. It was, right, so, basically, we said no, council said no, we're not going to do it, we recommend, the staff recommended that we not go fishing towards the tender, so we took a step back and reviewed everything, and then we've done that in-house, and I don't know the cost on the top of it here, but that's the comparison that we can give you, right? It's what we've been done, we tendered it, and what we ended up costing us. So, that's basically, I said, we, it is a savings, and, but, we, we have tried over the, you know, in our hiring, we've tried to select people, but if they don't have the skills, all the skills that we're looking for, but if they seem to have the ability to give them, and to train through those skills, and also take the other training, and get the certification that's required, and basically, we can give them a chance. But we did, the one, the employee that just left us in December, that was the plan for that employee, and after he got fired, it was just, there was no, no gumption in him at all to do anything more than do what he was told. And that's not what we're looking for, we're looking for somebody that's, you know, wants to, you know, even if they can't come in on that, or they want to dance and be up at the top, because we need certified operators, as well as, you know, we've got two issues here, we've got, we've got people that's, if they're going to do infrastructure work, we've got to have operators of the machine, equipment operators. But we also have to, in order to keep the water and sewer going, have to have certified operators, right? Because if they're not certified, it leaves it all on the backs of one person, that person sitting there, who has the tickets, has the certification that covers us all, right? He keeps us from going to jail, because we're certified, but if something happens to him, you know, you get sick or whatever, then we've got, really, you have to have backup, and that's what we're trying to build, is build so we've got enough certification within our workforce to be able to still function and not have environment and climate change come after us.
Do you have an age of your workforce?
Probably, just, it's got to be around, around fifty. Brian and I are in our thirties.
You guys are probably the youngest.
Yeah. Brian's saying, Brian, you guys are going to be...
What's your age?
Is that Mike?
I'm pretty sure.
Yeah.
Great for it.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, for our age. And that's, and that's the other issue, is all the guys that are fifty plus, you know, they're experienced, but a lot of them have dates when they're done, and I got nobody to step up and say, I want, I want to take over after him, because there's nobody there, and if you want somebody, I'm going to pay them a lot more than what they're paying, probably than paying the migraine to bring somebody in, just to be an operator, and that's what we're at today, that's what hurts, so.
Did you have some good people there that have been there quite a while?
Yeah.
So, why are they staying, why aren't they taking off to higher wages? Is it the healthcare, the benefits, the package, regular hours?
Well, all the, all the numbers I've told, they all have the same type of benefits, it's just not the pension money that we have here.
Yeah.
That does keep the guys here, that actually helps a lot, and they're, I think they're comfortable here. For example, you know, Colin, I was at four, they only leave three o'clock on Thursday afternoon to the dentist appointment, we don't burn them an hour and a half, they go to the dentist appointment, you know, it's the little stuff that they get makes a big difference, and you're not going to get some results, right? It's huge, so.
So, do you sell that to a person that you're reaching out to that's working for another contractor?
Yes, you were in on some of the conversations that I was at Christmas, that, you know, I did every effort possible to try to see if I could get somebody to play, and there's interest in paradise, it was just that the pay scale was the issue with them, so. It's experience, there's going to be less and less experienced people out there in the construction industry, period, because there's not as many people interested in that, and you see, you see it everywhere, right? You know, Ford, you know, Dexter's, Nova, they can't even hire a truck driver, you know, they're paying decent, decent money for a truck driver.
Tim Orton's closed down early because he can't find somebody to serve coffee.
Yeah.
Pretty soon, pretty soon the student's going to make fifteen dollars in that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're almost there.
So, what do you give a guy that, you know, was an operator, I don't know what the wage is, eighteen, twenty, I'm not sure, it's not to be discussed here, but I mean, it's definitely probably not a bigger scale than fifty dollars at that.
And the guys comfortable with that, too.
Yeah.
They see, they see everything all going up, and they don't see them going up, does it?
Yeah.
And they do comfortable with it, you know, and see, like, TFCIR just tried to get the guys, and they haven't gone, which is good for us, so we're doing something right there, obviously.
Yeah.
But some of that more information, so. Yeah, I mean, I guess basically, I want some direction for, I mean, yeah, it's going to, it's going to take more than five minutes.
Yeah.
To sort of drill that into this, but, you know, I mean, I guess we're busy enough that we don't need to waste time if we, it's not going to go anywhere. Council wants us to pursue, pursue this, then we'll pursue this, and we'll get all the information together, and we'll report back to council, and we'll go from there. We just wanted to make sure that we weren't going down a rabbit hole and come out in the deep lake.
Just, I don't need to know the numbers, but in layers of salary, I would assume entry level would be general operator, something like that, how many, how many layers are in your salary?
All right.
Five.
Do you have a little bit of a recruitment package, briefly? Make the, you know, new hire, hiring levels, packages, benefits, everything, they get a holiday for anything that looks like a holiday, that kind of stuff.
Everything, everything is explained in the interview process.
Yeah.
For sure.
Okay. I know it's top there, but it's like...
Oh, we're not the only ones, there, everybody is, so.
I mean, basically, for public, public works employees, for this, so, for the basic, I shouldn't call them, we got a second, but, for an operator that doesn't have certification, that's one of them, so, I think now they're giving... Salary range is starting from nineteen seventy-five an hour to twenty-two forty-four an hour at step five, right? Your certifying started at twenty-one sixty an hour, and they go to twenty-four thirty an hour, right? So, that's, but that's after they get certification, which means if they don't have it in the town, then they have to do studying, they have to take tests, and then they get the certification, and then they get the certification, that's, that's when they'll get bumped to that salary scale. Otherwise, when they're hired, when they're first hired, and nobody's got any certification, we're at the operator rate, yeah.
It takes about four years to get to the level two.
Yeah.
Just coming off the street, so.
Certification, or anything with air brakes?
No, for, for water.
Water.
Water question.
Yes.
With water treatment, that's, that's the ones.
Right. But equipment wise, any good to drive the five, ten?
It's got to be air brakes.
Yeah, you got an air brake to be careful of.
With a skid steer.
Skid steer, anybody that doesn't skid steer.
Much.
And payload.
Both capable of other.
Yeah. And as, as they learn different pieces of equipment, that's how they would get a raise in that scheme, as, as an operator.
Basic operator. These people are a person, or whoever you approach, are they full time, or they just work for contract? Like, some of those, they earn more per hour, but they may not work till in the winter, they may not work.
Two of them, the two most interested ones, I guess, the active ones, are full time employees, they work year round, so.
Yeah. I think we want to do as much as best as we can, but probably, you start, you know, like twenty-one, twenty-four is a good wage to deserve. But we have to name, well, okay.
When a student's going to make fifteen, it's not a very good...
Yeah, yeah, but that would be adjusted.
Yeah, that's, that's certified, I mean, just an operator with no, 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 because environmental certification, it started with nineteen seventy-five, depending on their, most is twenty-two dollars and forty-four cents, so. So, but, like I said, when I done the salary scale, I was comparing other public works departments and other public works departments, basically, all of them that was in our, in our survey, basically do basic R and M type things, they don't do specialized, they don't do their own water lines. Then they have to have a water line replacement or put new one, it's all contracted, that's, you just pick up the phone and call whoever it is, and it's all contracted.
When was the last time the pay scale was updated?
Before.
Three, so you need change.
March, but almost a year ago.
Year ago, yeah.
And was that just salary wise adjusted, or was that actual reading adjusted?
Oh, that was, that was, well, the whole salary scale changes.
That's right.
Yeah.
Every year it changes the cost of living.
Yeah. So, I'd say that our salary does go with the cost of living every year anyway, but then every three years or something, then they do a salary review, and survey of other things to make sure that we're, whether we're ahead of everybody else, or below everybody else. The other thing that I will say is that basically, these are, this is an average of those that were surveyed, an average range, right?
It's really big these days, too, like, nobody gets a cool raise anymore. It's just such a thing of the past.
It's a fact, right?
Cost of living, automatically in salary scale, it's a thing of the past, yeah.
So, like, I've never worked for a salary, the first time I got a regular check was here, but other than that, I was commissioned, so I've never had a salary paying job, so, it's a bit foreign. Trouble is, you start adjusting salary agent, because we need to bring in that person that's got all the experience, it snowballs through the whole chain, and that leads to...
Well, and we don't always round it, too.
Yeah.
So, that's the other thing about it, is it's something we can work with.
I mean, you know, basically, like I said, I didn't drill it down in, it put the, in monthly report to me, the information, and I just went from that and brought it to council, but I couldn't bring those, those prices, because basically, some of them didn't want them revealed anyway, and this would be in a public setting, and reviewing private, private companies are, are, it's not the, not the best.
Have you considered a contract work?
Say that.
Considered a contract work?
I guess there would be a lot of contract workers, the wages that are received, so.
But if you had, if you had specifically a six month or one year term position as a contract, because you need someone much more qualified?
Yeah, and it's, it's kind of how we do it now, when we hire somebody, too, so, like, everybody's done, we hire by contract now, and if they made a contract, they have to have met a certain level, or we can, we can hire again, so let's have a last one, the last three, I think, for this meeting.
Yeah.
We really try to protect ourselves.
Yeah, we're trying to, you know, keep the loophole very small, if not, not exist, existent, so, so, because, basically, we would get some... basically, we would get somebody, we could hire somebody, and that's the thing, you've done, do interviews, you get somebody that moves your way and then you can say, well, that's the person we want. Right? Hire the guy, and he isn't worth, it'll be, you know, in the long run, right? He'll show up for work every day, but, you know, he's worth that. Ethics are not what was portrayed in the interview. So, and without, without the contract being issued, basically, uh, they were, they were on probation under period. And that's probably what they'll do, their first three to six months that they're on probation, they'll be at the top of their game. As soon as they get their permanent thing, then you see a different person. And that's been the problem.
One thing we run into is a conflict with our benefits package that says it's for, uh, full-time permanent employees.
Yeah.
And then you get it after six months, so contract, we get into a really messy area after six months. And if you're a contractor and you like them and you keep them two years, by law, you're pretty much into a full-time permanent anyway.
Okay. Well, so I'll start throwing the numbers in. Anyway, we just wanted to make sure that, wanna bring it up to council and this discussion and so that we know what to do, because Ed and I and Robert and Matthew may have to work on this as well, so we're all busy enough of it, doing something for for nothing, basically.
Well, I get air brakes.
About time you got a job.
Coming from a banker. Okay, so I guess that that's my, yeah, thank you. Okay, Director of Public Works. You have a long list?
Yeah. So, um, I guess it's just gonna, I think I read read through it anyway, so I was gonna hit a couple spots. Um, so the new truck, um, we had it back, it broke down again, it's back on, it's back on the Arabian, the next day, they come in, did emergency call for us. Um, so they they bypassed numerous censors in the trucks that we can use until we get some parts. So it's, it's ran all weekend after he committed bypass the last sensor, so hopefully it'll stay like that for the rest of the winter. So I had all the generators serviced, all the water pressure generators, the town generators, fire hall generator, everything's in good work in order. So the crosswalks on the Moravec Street, um, obviously, we all know they're getting old and they're definitely ending their their lifespan. So we've installed all the new post-mat crosswalk lights all along Moravec Street. Um, I didn't want to spend too much on, too much work on this until I kind of had a, a direction to go in, so. Do we want, do we want to remove them, do we want to repair them, or do we want to look at replacing them? They are expensive. I don't have a price yet, I've looked into it, but I know the one municipality, it was like seventy-five thousand, and that was, what, ten years ago, probably? So.
That that's the reason we we did go into those lights before we went with the solar ones that are moving now. And like I said, we can buy three or four sets for set of costs of one. So you get some wiring and everything else that you have to put in, big insulation costs, and the other thing, those things hanging, hanging from a wire over top are, you know, basically, they're a liability and they're accidentally created to have current ones that are there, because they're gang, oh, they're they're not hung up by a post, they're
No, suspended on.
They're suspended on wire. So, I mean, they can condemn it anytime, it's a liability, and.
Is there a law, legal requirement that we have to have something to mount the truck?
No, not yet. No, because we have the, we have the sign signings, there never was a requirement other than the fact that I think that they wanted just to draw more people, more attention coming down the hill and that. As you're going downtown in Moravec, you, you know, it sort of wouldn't happen as you go.
They did actually give some light to the crosswalk itself, I believe.
Well, they did when they worked. Some of them are, some of them are permanent and we're getting, some of them have been repaired.
Some of them. I don't need them at all.
You don't see them, when you drive around the province, you don't see them very often.
I'm digging down. We have, uh, there's there's lights on all of them too. Right. Every one, I think, going down the, it's a left-hand side, there is one light that shines over the crosswalk on all two. Then they have, it's like I said, a sign each one, and we all know how bright they are when they push the button. If you don't see them, then.
I come across Victoria Street and I thought you were driving with a half-ton truck and yellow light was on that road, but it was a side crosswalk sign. Do those crosswalk signs, can you actually get them with a light that directs towards the side? It just popped in my head.
Likely today you can get anything you want.
Yeah.
We were talking about, there was some of the fourways in town, and there's so many different options out there to light up those fourways on, that I think nowhere to start at the person, so it's.
Something to look at.
Be high enough to light it in driver's eyes.
Well, I just think lighting up the entrance to the crosswalks.
Yeah. Run one-ten?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, yes, yes. Take those big overheads down.
Yeah.
Can't, I'm taking those crap there, get some money back. Three dollars.
Well, we had the example, the street light coming down, hitting the car, so.
Yeah, exactly. You see what that costs for damage.
Yeah.
So. And they're this big.
We were lucky that it was a car, not a person.
Yeah.
Right? Because you could very well be a person.
And who it was.
And, uh, you couldn't very well, you know, crosswalks, it could fall when somebody is walking across there. I mean, basically, if it falls on your vehicle, you've got some protection there, right? If you get damaged your car, it's gonna be expensive, but I don't want to, I don't think I want to be responsible for explaining why I I'm talking to someone, talking to somebody in the city area, injured or maybe even killed or somebody, so.
The one on Victoria Street, the turn, did it turn itself back the next wind, or did you?
A little fairy helped us fix it.
Okay.
How's that for an answer?
It was back the next day.
I I think, I would refuse. I I would recommend that they be taken down. We talked about it a little bit anyway. I think that redundant and a lot of. It's awful.
Okay. Anything else, Ed, or?
No, unless there's any questions.
Didn't they have very many, I had to complain about the road that flowed?
No, perfect.
Yeah, and two-seventeen, so.
And it's funny, because I had four phone calls on my, on my voicemail, and they were all from the municipal side.
So.
Well, the one com, uh, complaint that I got was the snow pile on the top of there last year was the, at, over there at Wound. And.
It's been brought up by Tom from Warden today, and what they're gonna do is they're gonna push everything over into the park spot across the road, and we'll take care of it from there.
Yeah.
Does he have?
Going on there this morning, I think.
Yeah, he was there.
Cleaning up there this morning.
He was, I sent him down to the stop sign first thing, so.
Yeah, I know we had a lot of snow and, and, yeah, but it's, it's, it's hard to see when you get up to the, yeah, up to the sun.
Okay, thank you. Director of Finance, what's the highlights in there?
Uh, we have the report there. Uh, it looks like we're headed towards a, uh, moderate operating budget, and that's primarily driven by the fact that our municipal financial capacity grant, formerly equalization, uh, is double this year, but that's just a one-time thing, and likely uh, de-transfer tax will be this an extra hundred thousand. Uh, and I wrote this before, uh, the second big snowstorm occurred, so, but I still believe we're, we're heading towards a surplus, but the winter continues, it's certainly gonna make it a smaller surplus. The assessment rolls are out, everybody's probably got their assessment already in the mail. Rates remaining the same, that means our tax revenue would rise approximately five percent. That's good news. Uh, bad news would be that the inflation rate, our costs are probably gonna rise about five percent. We don't have the numbers in yet, but, uh, that's kind of what you hope for, though, that at least your tax revenues uh, at the same rate, uh, rise with your costs, so you don't need to change the rate all the time.
Five percent is one of the highest we've had in years. The next year.
Yeah, next year could even be higher, depending on how P D S C reads the numbers. And, uh, that's basically it, unless there's any, any questions.
No, I haven't got my assessment. Sir? Okay, no questions? Our special constable.
Andrew Soren said, premise report, month of January, uh, ten Carlton Street, uh, still no change. Seventeen Water Street, process of bringing down the deceased tree on this property has begun, but due to the climate weather, this has slowed the process of having it removed altogether. Nine Water Street, this property has been cleaned up by the property owner, all garbage and old building materials have been removed, along with a derelict vehicle that have been parked in back of the building. The property owner has been advised to have a proper garbage and recycle container to be placed on the property as soon as.
That concludes the cleanup of the oil.
Yeah.
That was.
I was gonna ask that.
Yeah, he dug around the pipe stack, went down about two feet and cleaned it up and then put new soil around it.
Yep.
Two sixty-seven Choreroo, um, I traveled out to this premise and met up, they'd be salvaged to look over the property and to receive a quote on the estimation of the cost of cleanup. I'm now waiting for the direction and the window opportunity to go in and commence with the cleanup of this property. I tried, uh, last week with Greg, but unfortunately, he had a truck that was all froze up, and he was trying to decide to either take the mini excavator in, or, or just, uh, hand-balm it with a floodbed trailer. So we're just waiting on the weather.
Lots of stuff there.
Oh, yes.
Oh, H and S. Everything the local hardware store didn't want, they gave to him.
You could have run support. I see the van's been redirected.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had that towed.
Uh, Protective Services report, I don't really have much to report on that, still waiting insulation boxes on the antennas. And, uh, as of still as of yet, I'm trying to get my cameras back online, so Norm and Mick Langdale are both working on that, to get the bring-up back up online. There are a few. But I can't get the cameras up.
Is that the power? Did that power?
Power, yeah.
Do you ever have issues with snow, Bruce, that you can't see anything for a while?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Or high-windy or rainy days.
Any questions for Bruce? No questions, no? Nine Water Street looks nice.
I drove by, I drove by the day that tow truck was there and everything else, so I just kept driving by. But she'd never gotten that.
Fire in condition anyway, but.
Hopefully it won't again.
Okay, no questions for Bruce, then we'll move on.
Just, just talking about, just sort of, no, he came and pleaded for an extension. And he's gotten our extension, and that's when, it was when we left Bruce's office, we went and we went to do the cleanup. Because he was told that we were gonna make arrangements to go and clean it and build, right? And so, that's, he did end up cleaning it himself, and he had a tow truck there himself, right? So, uh, but the thing is, basically, he not given any, any exception. Wasn't warned, there was no reason, reasonable reason for an exception.
Okay, then we'll move on to correspondence. On track, police signal Nova Scotia. There goes our surplus. Yes, the letter, basically, is warning us, look, I've been here over the last couple of years with a union drive and what's going on within the force and and our C and P members being paid less than municipal police officers, that we'll be looking at some increases coming in our contract, so. So just be prepared.
Well, I mentioned that the, when the MP was on the Zoom, I, I vote, uh, unionized, he said, you can do nothing about it, so. Hadn't heard anything about it, so.
No, see, this is between the province, this is province and the Fed, so, yeah, well, Department of Justice or, Justice is the top there.
Yeah.
Has there been any conversation on the A and I book this, sir?
No.
No, just the same thing, we're just waiting to see what, what the last few have got on maintenance, but.
We'll just get it filled, but we won't even have a discussion, will we?
Well, ba- basically, of course, you know, in the mandate letter, it's sort of saying that they want us to negotiate or wants to negotiate with, uh, with, uh, wants to conduct an assessment, uh, in consultation, uh, contract leasing consultation with provinces, territory, municipalities, indigenous partners and stakeholders, engage with provinces, territory, municipalities that contract our C and P services to better connect your C and P community social support workers. So, supposed to be consultation, we'll see. Okay, we've got a letter here from, uh, from the Big Area Housing Coalition looking for support on their potential project. Man, this is a little conservative, lost some money here, hopefully. This property they're not promoting, one fifty-two Clean Streets is right up there. The former Haynes, illegal property, it's on the market for seven hundred and fifty thousand. Lobby support, help for these folks. Have they, no, I have, I've talked to Nancy the other day, but I didn't ask her about business, but anything developed around that that you're aware of?
No.
There are, there are actually, the last con, the conversation before, no, you got the conversation this morning, and that the zone in this letter was, uh, talking about, they were gonna want to come make a presentation to the council, so that you have a council, you know, knew, could ask questions, try to get them on board or not on board, but to understand what, what they're, what they're. Yeah, that's actually never. I I would think that probably in, probably on the knees in February is what we saw that. And probably the committee the whole of February, I'm thinking, because, yeah, this was Thursday, I was talking to her, and she said, I don't think I can get everything ready for the January meeting, I do not, 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 since it's, you know, only Monday night. And, uh, so she said, we'll look at, look at it hopefully for February, so they will be wanting to make, come to make a presentation to fill in some of the blanks.
Is there any zoning issues there?
It's, it's housing, so it's not bas- basically, the, the thing is, um, it's probably, um, it can be, as you said, that, that a rooming house, that, you know, bed and breakfasts are allowed in the zone. Converted dwellings up to four units are allowed in the zone, so, uh, it with pole, and that's certainly an older, old pattern, so that can be up to forty, I don't know how many actual units are, you know, living, dwelling.
It's about if there's already, if there's already five or six that are already in the, there, it would be grandfathered anyway. They're, they're bedrooms.
Yeah.
And.
I've been in.
Yeah, so it's, it's more bedroom than it would be, and that's what they'd want to use for the transitional thing, I believe. Well, the bedrooms, and basically, it's gonna be like a B and B or a rooming house, and that, that's allowable as well. Rooming house or anything like that, so.
They saved them quite a while ago, and they seem to have finally. And they seem to have finally caught on. But they've got to have the infrastructure in place for them to run something, to collect the rent, to decide who's going to be living there. All those things, they've got to have something ready to go before they even entertain getting a property. And they finally started, the last email that I got, that's some indication that they're looking for people to do those things.
Yes.
Like, you know.
All that in place, because not from, you know, the day when they say, well, now I.
Right, right, and I keep, keep trying to.
You know, I got, we get five rooms and I got twenty five people that wants, wants a room. Who's gonna make the decisions, right?
And then it's the day to day, right?
And then day to day.
Who mows the lawn, you know, all that stuff.
They use the house, that's a big building. Some of them feel like it was, Doc was injured, but. Yeah, wait, by the way, encourage, I've always been encouraging to keep going, I didn't expect seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but, you know. I guess basically what they, they want, they want. They want to know whether council would write a letter of support for this application, you know, with that.
Just they keep, seem to keep asking for these support issues. Can we just not give them a letter of support, period, not associated with any property, any product, just, yes, we would like you to do something.
Yeah, well, the, the problem is, and that would be a good thing if council wanted to do that, and, well, we. Then if they needed a letter for a specific thing, council's already give direction, if yes, then it would have to come back to the council table again. If you come to my desk and provide the letter. Provide the letter for a specific project, right?
That would be the way to do it, because there, there's gonna be a lot of applications for me to grant sometimes here.
Well, we've already seen this, what, the third?
So some kind of global message, yeah, support your effort, addressing the, these issues that are in the community. Okay, that's fair, council will do that. New business. Town and Dicky Lane in Victoria. What do you got, Tom?
There's quite a lot of, quite a lot of land. Most of them are, they are used. Any ones that, well, I guess basically. It's on the cloud, yeah. You know, on the cloud, bottom, bottom, yeah, very bottom, should have time inventory, less time inventory, or something like that, yep.
Tom, have you heard anything back from Mr. Irving and company about the old gas station?
No, I don't think Bruce has.
I haven't received anything. Just they're.
I was gonna do that the other day, that I'm probably all, I recut, get the information from here, contact here, I wasn't recut. Well.
Be nice to see it gone, West Burn.
Well, it'd be nice to know what they need one to do with the property.
Yeah.
Yeah. Just flipping through this land inventory, there's not, like you said, there's a lot that we are using, but there are the odd ones, the Dicky's school. Site up there, it's potential for residential. Some of the other ones, playgrounds and parking lots and stuff that we continue using, but we started this to see whether there might be something useful for housing. Looks like this group's going in a different direction. I don't know where Dash is going, Dash is.
Is Dash going, is the question?
Yeah, yeah, that's, I don't know, I must recut to a couple on there, I think. Dash has sort of stepped aside, you know.
Or, I mean, a hole, sort of.
Yeah.
So, at the bottom of, bottom of the list, I think, I guess I forgot that. I would say, page two, that's most of the, most of the vacant properties. Are, you know, very small. Landlocked. West Street Extension, Penitentum, Calhoun, open, West Street Extension from Calhoun to the V A R is unopened. West corner of the Racket Road and Queen Street. And outside of Old Fire Hall. We've had expression of interest from a running neighbor to purchase all or refortune of that. You order a Dicky Academy site, and basically that could be now that we have Second Avenue to go directly through there. You can have access to that site. Sort of isolated from the courthouse property and have access. The room that built the house, you could build the house.
The courthouse showed, or they showed no interest in that property anyway, so.
A lot of the interest, they want to use it when they.
You didn't get the order.
That's right.
Do we, do we take one of these, like the core of Alavalon and the core of Carlton and Victoria and put it up there, that we have this property, it might be available for development?
Just, just put it up there and see? That was one of the purposes of this exercise, Tom's put a lot of work in it, well, was to see if we could put some public housing on here.
That's right.
I mean, I think fourteen Queen Street, that's the last one on the, that's forty three, had an eight hundred and sixty square feet. Could be subdivided, or is that the one that, if you had expressions of interest from a couple of different people and on it? So, but basically it's town, town name, council has control of what they do, do with that, do with that land. And we could build or we could, I mean, one of, one of those, isn't a running neighbor that expressed interest.
Right now, too, the one on Victoria Street, Victoria and Carlton?
Yeah.
That piece beside it, the little, I think it's a white tan property, is now for sale. So if someone interested bought that and combined it with the vacant land, they might have a little bit different story of what they might want to develop.
There a sign on there?
Yeah, right in the front door, always been there for a week.
Oh, okay, I didn't say that.
Remax, something.
Let's look that up.
I don't think he's ever sold the property. That may, may be. But, yeah.
Well, we had the, the family was going to, had tried to, reached out, they reached about a couple of years ago, they were interested in it, and that even go more, so.
No, and the, the ball was left early and.
In his court to, and then, you know, and I never even got across from it, and I, my real law is once. So, you know, I, I think that, you know, we bought it at a back sale, well, for back sale. And we, we bought it just because it was that corner, corner of the lot, and, you know. This is a lot of work, but it must be nice to have in front of us.
No, I mean, it's good reflection, because when I, you know, I went so that you can actually see which, which ones and what, sort of. I started, as you see, some of them weren't in color, the lats and some of them are. Well, I ran into some issues with the printer for some reason, that it wouldn't show all of them in, in color, they went to Never Never Lane, so. But every time I've done it in grayscale, it would print everyone, so. So it was, you know, a fair amount of work to put together, but at least we know what it is.
So what do you want to do with this?
One, one thing is that little, little triangle piece there at Kentucky Fried Chicken that walked to us, by the way.
Good to know. Is that a little type of place?
Yeah, well, that's where, almost where the sign is, probably on that, on that little triangle piece, it's not a very big piece. It's nineteen, I think nineteen point nine square meters, so it's not very big, but I think it was for allowance to make, to give you what, make a, a right hand. Lane in there to go around.
It's good to know.
Actually, it needed, it'd be a beautiful.
Yeah, we did some cuts in the parking lot and things like that, so might be something for future development, if they get around the sign. So where are you going ahead with this, unless Tom's put a lot of work in it, you wanna, you know, do a little bit more view, we got some lots, there's potential for development, whether it's public housing, whether it's private housing, whether it's.
I like that idea, putting what properties you think that we can do something with.
Where they're big enough to develop.
The problem is, is, is getting a property big enough that you can get more than one or two.
Big, yeah.
It's because it's square footage and if they, you don't have at least four units, a lot of funding wouldn't look at you.
Yeah, you can't make ten percent of your money, you lost the trouble, right?
The only, the only place that's, you know, that we have any real size that we haven't got really a hundred percent committed, I mean, we do use. And I sold a lot off Victoria Street that we, we do use it for construction, but we also own a lot in behind it. In there along legs, right? So there is such a thing that even that lot in behind could be probably, if a road was put in, the street was put in, a road was put in, fifty seven way, we need building lots in there.
Well, that would sort of be more towards the new thinking of affordable housing, because the price of building now, they're talking about this new development, the Cocking Health Act is his version of affordable housing. Are smaller, narrower houses, which brings the cost per foot down and less bousle whistles, no dishwashers, no, you know, all those things that you get into a modern house now. A starter house just wouldn't have them in order to bring that price down, so that would sort of fit into that model if you could get those narrower sort of houses in there.
Can you put a road in there so I don't drive through a pit?
Speaking of.
Anything, yeah. Well, the thing is, I mean, base, part of that property is the Carlton Street extension, with the exception of the piece that we sold to Amanda Vittida. Time sold, her, but she was using part of it anyway. And she came to council, the council said, because the street was never open to begin with, and because we owned adjacent. We ever wanted to extend Carlton Street out into that other vacant landlocked piece, we, we still got room to, to put it and go out there and then. Put a slight curb and go right, right back to that one.
Well, should we, let's focus on that, that lot of land, three, three point eight seven acres. Do you see any future use for town?
Over.
Pretty good use for compost.
That's where we're gonna keep them. So the work for us is close?
Close, yeah. Yeah.
The land that goes with the V I C, just noting it's, I think it's two point oh one hectares.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's another one that could be.
Just, just the size of it.
Next door. Next door, hell.
If you put a, if you subdivide that, put a sign on it, it'd be sold tomorrow. I had another call on over Christmas.
Yeah, so I, I mean, basically, we can make our money back, you were selling that, right, you would make more than your money back, yeah.
There's a lot of people interested in that.
A lot of that. That's a, that's a prime piece of property. We can get prime credit.
If there's a time for it, I mean, and getting someone to build a expensive dwelling on it, it's probably now. It's not just about selling it and getting some revenue, it's about the future revenue area, get off it, too. I mean, that goes against the, well, a little line from the couple of cows we talked, it's an asset, we should look at.
Well, we need to talk about the future of the V I C this, this January, February, March.
Figure that out later.
Huh?
Figure that out later.
Yeah, but you're right, if we, we have to give Tom direction to subdivide that property. And then.
The other.
Might as well work, but I did have another call over Christmas from a person that has the funds to walk in, but. And there is opportunity to, Salvation Army, that building, Mount Street, Mount Street School. I mean, there's enough room that's not gonna be needed for that building, regardless of what it may turn into, we can at least put another building lot there off of Third Avenue.
Yeah.
Right, so, you know, I, I think that.
Maybe that's a good one to start with, just to set that subdivided and put that piece up.
Yeah, that, that should go, I mean, you're not gonna be able to build a huge church on it, but.
You should brush the street from the high school.
Yeah, it's location, location, location. There'll be a few, few steps to the, to the hospital and anything else, the mall and anything else, it's like. It would, it would sell, yeah. So I guess basically our way, the need is what council would like to proceed with.
Way to pick up one and.
Start somewhere.
And that may be, maybe that's the one, too.
I mean, there's that, that one, I agree with council, we're all about to do it, like the V I C, that, that one probably will sell fastest, I'm sure of it. Subdivided, we should have a, so that we, we gotta sell it for, for value, anyway.
We should have the discussion on the other side of what we do with the money from these properties, is this something we should be saving?
So they text, okay.
For the increased bill for, for leasing, or, you know, because, you know, that's coming.
So technically, because it's capital.
Right.
It has to, any proceeds have to go to our capital reserve, right? So basically we can, but what that does in turn helps finance our, our capital or infrastructure, right? So it's, it's money that we've got, is sitting on its assets, selling an asset.
So there's the discussion, should we discuss selling A to finance the building up the road at Victoria Street? You know, what, we should have a longer, longer term plan than just selling people.
Yeah, well, the thing is, it goes in that, and the thing is that basically if we, you know, you put a huge, you get a huge amount of money for a piece of land and you put it in the capital reserve. You can't help the operating, because you can say, well, we don't need to, they get operating, contribute as much to the capital reserve in this particular year. We wanted to use it like your, you know, sort of offset it, so, you know, playing the game, but.
Yeah, well, the game, too, is, is if we make a lot of money selling a property, we put that money into fixing Mount Street, then we're sort of lessening your chances to get a grant to do that work we had planned for.
Yeah, yeah, once it's in there, we can make.
Is it better to just separate the two and just say, we've got assets, are they not useful to us, should we turn them into cash? If so, yes, that cash will help us to stop borrowing and help earn a little bit of interest. And the decision to do another project, I would keep them independent.
Which, yeah.
That, that, I guess it will be basically the first thing is. That's a different line, I mean, that basically council has, any asset that we sell, council has to determine that that asset is not. Have any further use to the town, right, for the town's use, right? So if that determined, then we're free to put it on the market and sell it.
Yeah.
Right, so, I mean, we can. Well, we can put a motion board to council, but these are on, these are, these assets are not.
And there's costs to, right, to survey, find the market.
We should, should be able to recoup all of that money.
Oh, yeah, 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 but there's an outlay at first.
Yeah, there is, we have cash. Yeah, there is, we have cash, right, but it should be able to recoup it in, in the sale price, right? I mean, uh, years ago, basically, we used to sell, whether it was totally legal or not, we used to sell, sell property to, you know, if you, you weren't a councilman, you wanted to buy a piece of property, you mean, if council suggests we'll sell you a piece of property for, for five thousand dollars. But you have to pay for all the subdivision, all the other work as well, right? And that's what captain council had done, so it's sort of, the actual costs were, were more to the person and to the town, it was less dollars in the quote, and then, yeah. That can happen today, so. Basically, it's probably when you put the cost in, you know what the costs are, you subdivide it, you know, and basically, if you have an appraisal done of the, of the lot and you get the appraisal, then you can determine, okay, we spent this, and we need to get this to, and get, make a profit, because we should make a profit. Exactly as all, we shouldn't be in that way.
Absolutely.
So we've identified two pieces of property potentially that may not be of use to us. Maybe Queens Street might be maybe fourteen.
Yeah.
Developing down there, yeah, that might go three foot two.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have three pieces of property. Well, you said the Jason owner, landowner may be interested in that.
Well, this is for a law.
Yeah, yeah.
And basically, yeah, I mean. But that, put it on the mark, if you put these on the market, then basically you'll pick council out of it, then. If somebody's interested in buying it, then basically, well, you buy it. Now, have, have as much chance as anybody else to bid on the property, right?
Yeah.
Can you include on that, if you put it on the market, what the use would be?
Well, so.
It's up.
It's up.
It's up. Basically, it's gonna have to be.
Shore Road after the.
Yeah, that, that there, that there, that's.
Yeah, weird one.
Yeah. Because of the development.
There was no permit issued yet for anything beside it there, true?
No.
True? Oh, there, no, that has been changes, do you regard the lines?
No, no, the, next to the old takeout.
Oh, it's on.
Yeah. Yeah, he, he gets, that same person is a lot on Carlton Street, and he's been doing the same thing too. So, uh, I think the intention on Carlton, I hadn't talked to him at all about that lot, but, uh, because there were some concerns from neighbors about in Holland, in Dirk, and that, you know, there's gotta be water runoff on their property and that, I had a discussion with him. He said that basically he was not filling to the property lines, and basically, everything's gonna be sloped down before he gets to the property lines, and that his intention was to build a house there. So I don't know what his intention, maybe I'd rather fill it on the shore road if it was made than on, on the Carlton Street, if you're looking for a view, right?
Of course, he's got to fill it from here now.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so back to these, so we got three properties. Are we interested in clearing surplus of the town's needs and make a motion to council? And then they have a survey. And once that's addressed to council, then do some, some further discussion, some decision making. Does your second?
I'll second that.
Any further conversation?
Probably clarify which street properties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fourteen Queen, three point eight seven acres on Victoria Street, uh, two, the two acres they sell on.
I thought that's the Queen Street lot.
Yeah.
Third Avenue and Shore Road.
Yeah, the one at Queen Street.
Yeah. The only one at Queen Street, I, I'd like to make the point that it's the only piece of property left in town with.
Fourteen Queen?
No, the one near the end of Queen Street, we talked, I don't know if it's on your list, but we just talked.
It's really the street that has the access to it, isn't it?
No, that goes down by, well, between Polis and Thomas is there.
Yeah.
And you're right, but it's a peak drop off, but doesn't have water access, you're right, does have water access, but also needs to be cleaned up.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I, that one there, well, I shouldn't say that, that, somebody went there with a day with heavy equipment and all the, the boats and things away, once it was one there.
So that one on, on Thomas Road.
Thomas Road.
Tom, yeah, one point two six acres of the old town down site, fast leaves, green space and sled, um, residential.
Yeah, I'd be, you're gonna continue adding all here or just focus on the shooting for still?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, the thing is that if on gray slab construction could work there, we don't want it on that particular one, because where it was a dump, you don't want any excavation or buried excavation, or you don't want to disturb any inhabitants that may be there. And basically, that's why the contaminated or the ex service stations in that, basically, they try to sell them and cap them, turn them into parking lots or a park or something and that, you're not gonna be.
They don't want to.
Excavation, digging basements and trying to, digging up all kinds of things that should be.
Yes. What's the state of the, the old tank site down on the Racket Road? I know there's still well caps there, the fence is still around it, but is there, is there a time limit on that stuff?
It's all depending on, uh, the time that they can get clearance weather from the decision firing thing, and it's clean.
Do they still come and monitor once a week?
Yeah, 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 and the, you'll see them there. Well, yeah. So we, what was the motion? We, we throw some other lots around here.
What were three?
There were three, I mean, Queens, Victoria, Shore Road. Should we have a settlement?
Victoria and on Third Avenue?
Third Avenue, uh, Third Avenue was the.
It was listed as, it's listed as Mount Street.
Yeah, yeah, that's, it's listed as Mount Street, it's gonna be front on Third Avenue.
Yeah, that's what I want to clarification on, it's why the fact I seconded it, we were talking about four different properties.
Yeah, yeah.
Trying to figure out.
Four properties.
Why don't we start at B, which should?
Four properties, fourteen Queen.
Yeah.
Victoria.
Victoria.
Shore Road.
And.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. Take the, to declare a surplus of the town's needs.
Yeah.
You made the motion, and you seconded it, okay, before we ask the question.
Okay, so on the Victoria Street one, so that's, there's two lots there, right? There's one that the public works uses, and then there's the one that was right behind you.
Is that great in, but on the industrial parkland?
Does it know that part of it?
No.
Doesn't.
There's no interaccess to it from two seventeen?
See, that, that property is landlocked, and that's why they came, the property owners of the day, came to the town and asked the town if they wanted to buy it because it was landlocked property. And the only, only way that anybody would ever get access would be coming through the town's property, right? And, and technically, because the old, uh, right away for Carlton Street extension runs through that property, right? So we put it out there, and there's interest, we could talk about putting it, putting it, putting them together. Well, basically, we probably have to, in order to subdivide, we'll run out to, well, we've got sixty six feet, we have to give them sixty six feet of frontage off of Victoria Street, right? In order to, to make it a legal, legal lot, anyway.
What does that do to you, a sixty six foot road in there somewheres?
Nothing you can do, you have no choice.
Well, you won't, yeah, if you keep it to one side, you have the one side.
Yeah, and really, you think about it, you say sixty six feet, they're never sixty six feet, but not built.
Yeah.
They're like fifty, maybe, so.
As long as you're not trying to build a house on that sixty six foot right away that someone else owns the land in behind, you're fine, right?
But, yeah. But I think, I think basically, we should, should, should do, if we're gonna sell it, we're gonna have to have a minimum of fifty feet frontage, because that would make it a legal lot, right? For the, for the frontage, and you can put whatever size road, the person who bought it, you can put whatever size road in that, but we're gonna have to give them access through there, right?
And that's not in that flagpole, loophole zone?
No, no. No. That's. I'd much rather have that because, because the thing is that basically, they can, that lot is big enough that they could subdivide it with access, with access. Uh, they could turn it into a, or a road that they could turn over to the town, right? Right up the street, and give it, and bring, then they could subdivide off of, off of that street, right? I'm proposing that we build it, I'm proposing that the developer would build it to our standards.
Yes.
Right, and then when we're done, they would ask whether we're trying to take it over, it become a town, town street, we adopted it as a town street to maintain it from hence forward. Then they could subdivide that piece in the back and make two or three lots back there.
Okay, so any other discussion on that motion? None, good. All of us say aye?
Aye.
Amendments to the dangers and unsightly policy. Okay.
So. Basically, so the, page three, starts with the amendments. So, and under delegation. It contains the council delegates its authority to issue dangers or unsightly orders to the administrator of dangers or unsightly premises. An employee of the town, this may be a chief administrative officer, to be responsible for the dangers or unsightly provisions of the National Government Act or successor legislation. And then B, instead it retains, its council reserves the authority to issue, uh, dangers and unsightly premises orders in which an order to demolish is being considered. And to hear appeals of the orders issued by the administrator or the council. And the next section four, report of dangers and unsightly conditions, uh, deleted, uh, the town shall not only conduct an investigation of a danger and unsightly, once a complaint has been received, so that's been deleted. So the new A, and we got the old B, becomes the new A. So basically, the addition, uh, added order by the administrator. And the report of an unsightly property made by a resident or ratepayer of the town will be accompanied by the name of the person reporting it, or it will be noted as being received anonymously. Each report of a dangerous or unsightly property will be duly reported on a form for this purpose. See appendix A, so basically, the other things have been deleted, the complaints will be in written form, and that anonymous complaints will not be investigated and deleted. So, uh, the old D was eliminated, but, uh. And the last one, E, is, uh, appendix B instead of schedule B. And if necessary, with the approval of the chief administrator, administrator may extend the period for completing the initial site inspection by up to thirty day additional days. So basically, uh, took that option out, yeah. Then initial site report, it basically went from four, from thirty days to fourteen days. And, and the next one is on page six, same thing, went from thirty days to fourteen days, and also, that's under order to remedy. And also, an order made by the administrator may be appealed to the council within seven days after the order is made, that was deleted because it's actually said by the same in C, so it was a redundant sentence. And so C says, in order to remedy made by the administrator may be appealed by the owner to council within seven days after the order is posted. That changed may, it used to say made, uh, it actually should be when it's posted, right? And on, under enforcement on page seven, it's just the fourteen and thirty days changed into fourteen from thirty. Uh, on the next, on page eight, D one and D two, it's the same thing, fourteen and thirty, that can change. And in the appendix, I think that, uh. It's in the order to remedy on page fourteen, it's the, it goes, you will have fourteen days as opposed to thirty days to rectify the violation. I think that's covered all the amendments, and, so.
That was the discussion being held around the table here, especially around the complaint derivative.
Well, I think I, I'm hopeful that I covered everything that council expressed.
It's good.
And, uh, Captain Adam Tyne, praying, uh, the, uh, Shore Road property and the Nine Water Street property were the two that, uh, you've exercised the new direction. So far, it seems to be first, I mean, basically, uh, Shore Road, you can't get it, get it clean when you can get it clean since the weather conditions and that warrant, but, uh, well. There is a, with that particular property, there is a concern that from the contractor, that doing damage to the property, that when, you know, once any damage that is done could be as minimal as possible, and I think we did do, we could take this, we could pursue for, you know. Not going in and destroying property if you're gonna make it, right?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, we gave it frost for a couple weeks.
So the one on the Shore Road, which ran in, when we ran into the problem on the cost.
Yeah.
Um, should we increase the, uh, we've got what?
Fifteen.
Fifteen hundred. And plus, come in at twenty four, uh, should we increase the cost? So we don't have to have a special meeting to, uh, let's change it.
I don't think that was a burden, I think that email worked quite quickly, and we had the chance to move it along.
Yeah, everybody, I mean, if council is comfortable with that, that approach, I mean, basically, we know that that's comfortable when we, when we get that, and, you know, to the email, it seemed to work very well. And if council is, you know, we do have a policy that allows, uh, pulling by email, and then it just, or, or telephone. And it has to be ratified at council, so if that were at council, we will be ratified, you know, in the public record, but, uh, no. I mean, that's up to council, I mean, this is council policy, right, so you wanna up, up the, not, not. So you wanna up, up the, not, not the time to approve amendments. I didn't do it at, at the time, when I, when I done that, that wasn't, uh, wasn't an issue, it was after I had that policy amendments done, right?
I think that'd be the worst we've ever come across.
Yeah.
You saw the pictures.
Was that, was the number one on the City Street?
Yeah, in the back, yeah, yeah, yeah. But we all agreed to the twenty-fourth.
Oh, yeah.
Tom, just my concern is with that eight C. Uh, the order to remedy may be made by the administrator, may be appealed by the owner to council within seven days. How, how do you see that process? I mean, I, my concern would be that may be another sort of delay tactic that may be used by someone unscrupulous.
Well, I guess it certainly could be, but we could call council anyway.
Would we get, would we, is that what would happen, would we call a special meeting?
We could call, depending on the timing and depending on the severity of the, of the thing. Now, if it's a, if it's an order to demolish, or if it's an demolition order, then we have to have a public hearing anyway. You know, short of a hearing, if, uh, we give them notice and they can, if it's just an order to remedy and basically they have the right to appeal, if they don't, after that seven days is gone, right? Then they're off, off to the, to the races.
That's part of the MGA, isn't it? That's a minimum of seven days, we can't take it, can't change.
Yeah, they, they can't wait until, uh, eleventh day or twelfth day and try to appeal, right?
And that wasn't my issue, I didn't, there has to be an appeal process, obviously, but it, it, someone who.
Somebody could play the game, or you're, you're quite right, and if they, they do, and I mean, basically, depending on the, the, the timing, is council could have a special, have a special meeting for, for the appeal hearing, right? And, uh.
And what, and what, you know, I'm just thinking play the devil's advocate, what if that person said, I can't make that day, I can't make, you know?
But send representation.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's under.
So they, they, yeah, if, once the appeal is set, if the date, they're notified that on, on such and such a day, such and such a time, it's the council will adhere your appeal. And that's, that should be it, you know? I mean, if, you know, he gets hit by a bus and is in the hospital and can't count, you know, that, that may be a, 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 a different thing. You know, short of that and death, there shouldn't be any reason for an extension of the appeal period. Or, right? Or the date of the appeal. Some will, but it depends on the severity of the thing. And that's, the, the other thing is by separating, um, the danger and unsightly, uh, orders and the infractions of, I'll say residential garbage or solid waste. And use the solid waste by law to deal with those. Uh, because accumulation of garbage, if somebody has, is not, shouldn't be, we shouldn't use dangers and unsightly as our first attack, right? We go in under our bylaw, because under our bylaw, he, uh, the bylaw officer, there's the authority, walk in that day, they'll look at, assess the situation, have the discussion with the owner, and the owner says, you know, well, F you, or whatever they wanna say, not gonna do it. He can call break, or have somebody come, play away, that day, and clean it up, right? So we don't, solid waste, we don't wanna play, play around, I understand that. Because, uh, it's, you know, draws pests and, uh, it may, if the dogs and animals get in it, screw it all over the place, and, uh, it's just a nightmare. So, we do have the, we have the tools and that's why we're gonna try and do our best to separate tho- those issues. So you can deal with them under the bylaw as opposed to dangers and unsightly. Now, with two thirty-seven Shore Road, I guess that's the number, is that right?
Two sixty-seven.
Oh, two sixty-seven, I mean, alright, so with that particular one, there was garbage there as well, that's all garbage. But the whole yard was in such a state of all kinds of other things, that's why we went with the order, right?
Should I individually need to look at the order?
Yeah, yeah. Look some pictures, yes. Okay, we would need the motion to take this to council. So who to approve the amendments?
Anything comes up in the need, don't write it on the council.
Second and.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor are taking this to council?
Aye.
Aye. Days, uh, coastal erosion climate action plan, I had, I asked for that to be added, because that was one of our top agendas. We got two more day in February, but this one here, coastal erosion climate action, we, whatever our next steps around that. So start thinking about that, uh, you know, we did the racket. But what do you wanna do around climate action, retrofit buildings, change lights, which we've done, heat pumps, which we've done, buy electric hybrid truck for public works, uh, charger stations in, uh, plant fires all over town, all kind of plant trees. So think about things like that that we wanna do.
Are there any grants out for, um, charging stations?
Uh, there, uh, assistant announcement, they put two hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty in progress. They're not ideal ones, but I did email and ask them to contact town hall about that, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, so those kinda things, keep that in the bag of mind, what, what can we do? Step two, or do we rebuild a trail that's so thin for two million dollars, whatever.
That's on, uh, and erosion, have we inspected around the old town dump recently?
I haven't, no, so I would say nobody has.
Other than walking along there, yeah.
Yeah, I know there's sandbar in front of it, just really disappearing.
That told me, uh, so just for council information, uh, CARP is applying for a grant and they want us to partner, be a partner on the grant. So they, uh, basically it's support for the Clean and Apple River Project Eco Action Application. And the project entitled Natural Interceptor as a Tool for Mitigating Freshwater Pollution and Building Climate Resilience in Southwest Nova Scotia Priority Place. Basically, they wanted a letter of support, which I, they have supplied me a draft and, uh, basically it says that we will partner with them, I think they've been talking with it. And concerning this project, uh, they've come up with some sort of a, a budget. And it's gonna be done over a, at least, yeah, two fiscal years, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four. And, so, basically, we would be committing to about thousand dollars as in-kind resource contributions. So, and, and, but, uh, basically, the, uh, I think there's some workshops and things as part of this thing, uh, educational workshops. And part of that would be, uh, uh, counsels attend to these, uh, this work, workshops and things like that. Different things that we usually do with public works, uh, using some of our equipment and help with the projects and that, that type of thing. So it's not aimed, it's not, we're not writing a check, it's not being cashed. I just wondered if council's all right with supporting that, that provision. I've been, I've been signing up and attending some, there's stuff online, it's actually quite interesting to deal with, from here to and that, uh, right up to the watershed and that, those things that you're doing, things that you're looking at. You should follow them on social media, you can sign up and they put a half hour course on, things like that, and that's what, sort of what it's talking about. Are we interested? I, I, you know, I think we should, you know, I don't see why not. They might need the moral troopers up for the day, but.
They're pretty good to them, they use.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually the back, they like to have that in the operator, they, they dig stuff for them themselves.
They're probably talking more about rain gardens and things, you know, they're catching a lot of.
They take a lot of trees this time.
Trees, yeah.
Rain and shrubs that produce berries.
Yeah. Well, we need trees.
Yeah. Sound like a lot of trees, what she was telling me, so.
Some trees clean up, and some trees are bad.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Use blueberry bushes for the park there.
Blueberry bushes.
They hooked the two spa, three spas in town, I think it was, to put in like a blueberry hedges, haskay hedges, raspberry hedges. So if you're up for a walk on trails during that season, you can stop, pick the berries on your way through, so, out of that, I guess a good ideas.
Okay, so we support, we, yeah, this letter, we, we, we just give you an direction, Tom, that we support. Oh, yeah, staff, yeah. Guys can all go home.
Can we go, if, under the question, uh, dog park?
Yeah.
I sent out the phone with a small blue Ford pickup. Take a wheel, a snow blower, a snow blower off the dog park, did you know?
Didn't know either.
That would have been jammed up in. Then we got more places to.
Don't use the snow blower.
Whoever was.
Didn't have it for the ranger.
Must have a dog. Would use it.
Hope everybody picked up after their dog.
So why is it gone now?
Hey, so Tom's gonna send that letter of support in, just for the projects. But thinking for council, come back, you know, I, I, I didn't email, as soon as saw the announcement of the two hundred and fifty chargers through the problem, emailed us and listened to you with the, having a conversation. Uh, we do need, we do need more downtown somewheres, Murray and Fairlock. The whole base put a bunch in, one of the communities down there got a Tesla, they got a Tesla, they got one, yeah. Yeah, they got a Tesla, and they need to be, there's Tesla superchargers, and then there's the one in the middle, we need more of them. But anyway, things like that, whether it's.
Well, I mean, that one that we have here, I mean, it was, uh, I don't think it's a long time, but it's, it's, it's used. Ever since it, uh, it was put in.
It hops up cars, they don't charge your car, they're fully, because it takes them eight hours to charge.
Of course, at the five, our own new five hundred cars, they have it cutting up and everything.
Yeah, you gotta be careful what's wired.
Yeah, so the guys come in, go through all that stuff, because he goes, it's the way it future.
Yeah.
He cut it the wrong way, oops.
Yeah. A lot of holes is going through, so think of other ideas, you know, climate action, we did the rack bridge, but we should have just leave it at that. Yeah. Okay, community development quarter, we have that back on, Tom had sent the job description out. And, uh, really want to, if it changes or not, are we gonna proceed with it, approve the job description?
The only thing I see different in it is the first line, one year term position. Only reason why is because I think there's a lot more, a lot of groundwork when that person's hired. Uh, they're gonna have to work with the department heads, uh, we're gonna have to see what projects we have ready to go. Um, and this thing's gonna take a lot, longer than one year to build a foundation for that position. Because we're gonna have to have input with that person to see what we would like as well, right? And I think it's gonna take more than one year personally.
Maybe we do two years to get somebody that's not performing, but. Would we, uh, but I still have your, you still have your, for all that to do?
Yeah, you still have your formation period.
Things like that, I guess, yes, basically, I guess, yeah. I, I mean, when I, when I drafted this, we were trying to, you know, book my one year. But, you know, if we're gonna get that right person, you know, they may go to, uh, come for a two-year term.
Yeah.
Right? Or with the possibility of a two-year term, but, you know, going on the interview of any of our candidates, it's, you know, they, it's could very well turn into a permanent full-time job.
Right.
Yeah, that, that's our hope, but at this time, you know, we want to, you know, it's a, it's a pilot project, basically. So is it, people after the two-year term?
Well, I, I guess if, if you realize that it may have to be extended, because I don't know how much progress you're gonna see the first year, is all I'm saying.
Well, if you get a person that's used to writing grants, you're off to go.
Yeah. And the one good thing it does, it does help downstairs a little bit too.
Yeah, so all, all of it, and the other thing, communications officer and all that, it's, my, you can't, for that to be a higher, higher level, right? Not, and, uh, not that they have to be a pro in communication with somebody that's got enough, can, can communicate well and can help with getting our messages out there, and, you know, that, that type of thing, right? Well, can assist less with in, in doing, doing that. And, uh, yeah, because they can do that, you know, they can stop writing a brand application, put an ad on Facebook, or whatever.
Sort of off the subject, I see now a lot lately in the news that you don't see the mayor of C V R M or H R M now talking about it. It's a public person doing it now.
Yeah.
Depending on the matter.
Yeah, but they're not on as much as the public.
Started back in the nineties with the G P L, which was dispelling.
Let's see a lot more out now on the, I see, see more, I know, I'm just saying, it's funny.
Yeah, they, they got a full, long, just communication, person, that's all that they do, speak to their day. You know, they, they, they brief, brief the, they brief the council, they brief the mayor and everything else, and they discuss what's gonna be said. And in fact, that person, uh, coaches the mayor and his spokesman at council what you should be saying and what not to say, right?
Yeah, because if it's a murder investigation or something, that you want the police department to make sure that they're, you know, on track and message, yeah.
So that's not exactly what I was just like, communications, right? I just wanted to make that, wanted it more as a, somebody that you can go to, uh, somebody that can help with the newsletter and tho- those type, type of things, right? Okay, other than that, you know, why, why, let's get back to the one-year term, let's, let's reach some agreement, one year, two year, five years, fifteen years.
No, I don't go four years like you said then.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
Either or.
And you can always be extended, the same, just be prepared, but, you know, if I don't see a lot of progress in the first year.
No, I, I, I agree with that, once they get their feet wet, but you don't know, you might have somebody walking here with the ability and has the experience, uh, of course, we know how hard it is to find anybody today, it's hard to tell you.
I think a two-year term would be more enticing when you're trying to find somebody with, you know, higher level caliber.
But if they're made aware that this may, uh, lead into a.
That's the care.
Right, yeah, that, that's the care, and the thing is, we're trying, trying to see whether this is, we're gonna get the results that we're expecting.
Yes.
And if, if we're getting good results, then this could be extended for another year term, or could it be, you know? I was asking, we can.
Would you consider, instead of calling it a term position, would you consider calling it a contract position? That way you can terminate the contract at any time if they're not working out. There's not a lot of pressure.
Because if I was sitting outside, waiting to take you for a mirror, right? Yeah.
Why, we got national town.
We do, man, that's a town, a problem. But, sitting outside.
Very deserted.
Yeah, but I'm not, yeah, I'm supposed to use, you know, one-year contract or two-year contract or whatever, right? As opposed to term position, right?
Just to keep our options open.
Yeah. I mean, we'd have to, which we usually do anyway, now we started drawing up a contract with every employee that we hire, we do a, uh, a contract with legal help. And, and, uh, then basically it's signed, and if the mayor followed any of the things in that contract, see here for us to, uh, uh, get rid of that employee, we need to.
I feel more comfortable with being two years if it says contract.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, there you go. You make that amendment? You make that amendment, uh, you wanna make that a motion, so we can take this council, get approved, and then, so, then we can have discussions on it.
Sure.
Whether it's a thirteen-dollar or fifteen-dollar. So we got a motion to make that a two-year contract, take it to council.
I'll second it.
To approve the job description. We'll second it. Any other discussion? I, I, I know your comment was long, you thought it was long, there's a job description on Facebook today for Grant Thornton for an office amendment, no, this isn't here as long as what they...
Well, it's, you know...
I was about to add that, hey, I think it was twenty pages. Yeah, yeah. All those in, huh? All those in favor of that motion?
I, I...
So, uh, when I sent it to that council panel, mentioned the salary, or it should be, and usually, you don't put that in a pay and a job description, because it's based on salary scales and stuff like that, and, but I did do a little bit of research, high level research, and using the AMA survey, salary survey, which was down in front of the plan, um, I found a communication officer and a community development officer positions, and I picked, for the communication officer, I picked, uh, five towns, one is the town of Yarmouth, one is Bridgewater, one is Amherst, town of Amherst, and this is Trenton, and put the salaries a high and a low, and the average for a communication, what they pay for a communication, is probably more of what we're talking about as opposed to a HRM or CVRM employer, right? Uh, so the average salary is from the low of fifty thousand seventy-nine dollars to a higher of sixty thousand two hundred forty.
It's a bit rough.
And then I found a community development officer, and there's like four towns have a community development officer. I didn't pick any of the rural units, because I wanted to stay with towns, because, and smaller towns, so it will fill Stewiak, and it's a product of Stewiak, and Amherst, and New Glasgow, so the average for a community development officer is fifty-one thousand on the low end and sixty-four thousand on the high end. And so I combined the two averages, and so, uh, basically, it comes to fifty thousand five hundred and eighty on the low end and sixty-two thousand one hundred and twenty-two on the high end, right? Somebody like Stewiak, that, that position probably encompasses a couple others up there. I didn't find out what the job description was.
That's a community of a lot of hundred people.
Yeah, yeah. Now, their salary range for their community development officer was forty-three to forty-five, so, right, so they were on the, you know, on the low end, right? Wolfville is, of course, on the hot, one of the highest, and Amherst was pretty high as well. So Wolfville was forty-eight to seventy-five, and Amherst was fifty-nine to seventy-one. And Glasgow was fifty-two thousand, that was it, fifty-two thousand nine, with no higher, a lot of those were, they're often not positioned, so, and...
Much bigger communities.
Yeah. So, I mean, they, basically, originally, I anticipated that the, the salary probably be offered would be the same salary range that mostly...
Yeah.
Just call that back. Stop COVID, have a test. Twice. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna email from the fire chief. So the executive assistant position is forty-three, forty, forty dollars. Yeah, that'd be fair, to be fair. Okay, well, let's get the job description approved, and Tom set aside the skills, and we'll see what's up there. It may not be anybody, hopefully not, it may be more than what we think. Okay, that's the last thing on the agenda, we gotta move in camera, can we have motion to move in camera? Sorry? Anybody that doesn't want to move camera?
Sorry?
Over here. Huh? Yeah, well, yeah. Don't move, don't move, it looks like a cure.
Huh? It'll take me two hours, lay it down on the next...